All right, good evening, everybody. Appreciate the great turnout we have here. Thank you so much. I really am a big proponent of getting information out to public, and I just really love to see a full house, seats almost all the way filled. We have a really good presentation tonight on the ballot measures, as you know. You can see just kind of a rundown of our topics here and how the evening will look. Let me start first by saying my name is Gabe Turan. I'm the city council member for District Two, which includes River Park. It starts over at Fifth Street, near the Old Oxnard High School, soon to be Campus Park. Stands all the way north to River Park and is bordered on the east side by Oxnard Boulevard, west side by Ventura Road. So some quick housekeeping, you know, please get comfortable, find a chair for yourself. We have a number of folks here tonight who can speak to questions that are going to come up. We have designed this in such a way that the most common questions that keep coming up about these initiatives, we have tried to have those answered by the presentation itself. And I appreciate folks who took the time to pre-submit questions that they were wondering about, curious about, and we will have those gone over. Then we have some of the pre-submitted questions that are, you know, still outstanding. We'll go over those, and then we'll open up the floor to Q and A after the presentations. If you have a question, please hold it till the Q and A portion, because it may be answered by the presentation or one of the pre-submitted questions themselves, all right? So if you're like me, you gotta write it down, you know, write it down, put it in your phone, whatever. But hang on to it till the end, till the Q and A portion, because again, it may be answered. So the restrooms, for those who need it, we go out this door here to the left, and we have the men's room on this side, and through the gate on the other side is the women's room. And just real quickly, I do want to acknowledge that we have a couple of folks here tonight. We have our city manager, Mr. Alex Nguyen, and then special districts manager, Mr. Anthony Miller, our chief of police, Mr. Jason, or Chief Benitez, and then we have our public works director, Mr. Michael Wolf, and assistant director, Steve Howlett. And they may have some responses as well if we look at some more general questions about how our public works operations are throughout the city. We have our director of cultural community services in the back, Mr. Terrell Harrison. Thank you very much. And I saw the Mayor Protem was here. Did he just come say hi, or is he still here? There he is, and we have Mayor Protem Brian McDonald there in the back. All right, and did I miss anyone? We have actually Corporal Jack Martin, who's also the beat coordinator for this area as well. If you live in River Park, he's your guy. He's been fairly responsive to some things that have actually come up just in the last couple of days. And so he's on it, he's great. By the way, if you are resident of River Park, would you mind raising your hand, just so that... Awesome. And so all those hands that are up, Corporal Martin, they all see you. You got your cards ready to hand out when the time comes? All right, so without any further ado, I appreciate folks, again, giving your time tonight. I like to run a really tight show, and that's for the benefit of everybody here to gather information. And so just out of respect for your time and the time of the staff who've been here to give you all this information, I do ask that if you can limit side talking or being disruptive, if someone is being disruptive next to you, you know, you can politely just remind them that we're all here, we're all adults, we're all trying to get this information, and we want to do it in an efficient and respectful way. So there will be time when we get to the Q and A portion for any burning questions folks have to ask that question, all right? And so again, let's please be respectful about this. When one person's sharing, we should all be listening, and we will give you that same respect when it's your turn to share as well and ask a question. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to our first portion of the presentation tonight, and that's gonna be with our city manager, Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for being here. Okay, so I've got a few slides that are my responsibility to cover, but I want to open with a very brief introduction. I'm assuming everybody is well aware that you live in a Melrose neighborhood. So I just want to remind everyone, the Melrose law is provided by the state for local communities to get large neighborhoods like this built. You're not the only Melrose in, certainly not in California, but also not in Oxnard. There are a few others. We actually have a map later that shows all the special districts' neighborhoods in Oxnard. Melrose is the most advanced version, so it's under the Community Facilities District sets of rules. Some of the older districts are known as landscape maintenance districts or waterways districts, but they're all special districts, which means before the neighborhoods are built, the taxing system is put in place, and therefore you pay this special tax. And I know there's a narrative going around that says, "Oh, but you're being double taxed as you pay the general property tax that everyone else pays." So you pay the general property tax that everyone else pays, and that's for all of the services and infrastructure and staff and everything that the city provides. The difference is, your special tax is collected only for your neighborhood. Your general tax, like everyone else's, goes for everything else in the city, and your general property tax, the city gets seventeen point six percent of it. So I want you to also understand that the bulk of the general property tax goes away to the county and the state. So for all the property tax in the city, we get seventeen point six percent back. So just keep that in mind. So people say, "Well, where does that portion of the tax go?" Again, it goes to all of the infrastructure in the city. It goes to provide for the fact that there is a police department, that there is a fire department, that there are roads that connect your neighborhood to the rest of the city and the community, that there are sewers and water pipes and everything that deliver water to you and take sewage away. All of that infrastructure is necessary for your neighborhood to be here, and the Melrose was necessary for your neighborhood to be built. So it is not something that the city imposed after you bought in here and moved in here. This was, it's basically part of the infrastructure of this neighborhood, okay? So Mr. Starr, who's here, Aaron, you just walked in. I have a specific question for you, which I'll ask you afterwards. Introduce three...
Excuse me?
This is a town hall meeting. You're certainly welcome to call your own at some point. So now you're gonna be faced with four measures for this neighborhood. Mr. Starr introduced measures J, K, and L, and the city, in response, introduced measure I. So I'm gonna do a quick summary. So measure Is essentially keep everything the same, right? So it's not a new tax, there's no increase, it keeps everything the same. And it takes one step further, which is of the kinds of services that the Melrose law allows your special tax to be used for, there's a handful that we've not used. So we are permanently removing them if you should approve measure I. So those are, I can barely see the highlights, recreation program services and library services, operation and maintenance of museums and cultural facilities, fire protection and suppression services, which we've already taken out of your assessment. But if you approve this, now it's permanently out, and the council could never put it back in, as well as ambulance and paramedic services. The other measures, measure J, I think, is that the one that, I gotta look at my notes, repeals, okay, so measure J repeals the whole thing. Measure K provides for a reduction of the maximum special taxes that can be used to impose at CFD Five. And measure L adds, puts limitations on uses of the special taxes for this neighborhood for CFD Five. Okay, so first of all, I want to tell you, bottom line is this. If you support any of those, that's your right. But here's the bottom line: any amount that you reduce, you will not get in services. There's a principle at play here, which is we can't allow a major home builder developer to come into any community, set this up, build this neighborhood, sell all the properties, leave, and then the owners later defund it. The main general fund cannot subsidize any special district neighborhood, and actually will not, based on any recent ordinance that the council passed. Now, there is something clever in Mr. Starr's measures, which is buried in the language, which obviously, when you go to vote, hopefully, everybody will read everything first.
It's really nice that you can talk about being without being a slaw.
But they are linked, so in the language, they are linked. So let's just say they all pass in terms of meeting the fifty percent threshold. But most of you wanted measure L, fewer of you wanted measure K, and the least amount of you wanted measure I, which is the one that I believe repeals everything.
J.
J, sorry. But because in the clever language of the ballot language, they're linked, measure J would actually be the prevailing measure, right? So it means repeals everything, even if the majority of you wanted something less. So I just want to point that out. Very clever. Just make sure you read it and understand that they are actually linked. So it isn't like you're choosing one. Okay. All right, so now you all have a lot of questions about what are you getting. I've heard in the last meeting, some of you said, "Well, we don't know where the money goes," and so... And we're always happy to discuss what's happening with your budget and where the money goes. And in fact, every year, we do this here publicly at your neighborhood council when we discuss, our staff, Anthony, discusses your budget. So every year, you, as the community, have the opportunity to say, "We want more of this, less of that." "We know what the range of money is that we have in the bank." And those things change over time. So that's a different discussion each year than if you weren't just getting rid of it, because then there's no discussion, right? It's really, so that's the bottom line. It's really that straightforward. And I'm gonna hand it off to Anthony for a few slides, and he's just gonna summarize for you where your money goes and what the budget is, and maybe a little bit about the process and participation.
So for those of you who were at the last meeting, this slide may seem familiar because it is the same information, just put together a little more graphically, regarding this district's budget. Each one of these individual icons represents a certain portion of what your CFD funds, and it's specific to those services that are outlined there. And again, as Alex mentioned, if anybody has any questions on these, I'm available at any time to speak to residents essentially about what specific services are available to individual residents within this CFD, or in fact, any special district, as we might, we'll cover it later. Specifically, a lot of CFD services are focused around your landscaping in this area and your park spaces. Your landscaping and your park spaces are really some of the most, I would say, top line, or most important items within the CFD that the CFD cares for. That includes all of the amenities within those parks, so your playgrounds, your restrooms, the water that waters the grass, things along those lines. And there are also elements within this budget that are, that may be a little more, I would say, hard to see. For example, the storm drain system within this development was put in as a condition of this approval for this development. It is funded from special taxes that go, that come from the CFD. So specific items like that may not be immediately apparent to somebody walking down the street, but that particular storm drain system doesn't actually serve any other neighborhood but this particular one. So those items are things that do show up in your budget every year, and as Alex said, we do discuss this with the neighborhood council. This last year, we started the discussion around January, some thereabouts, and then continued on through the budget season. So if you have specific questions about what services are provided or if you have questions about how the budgets are developed, staff, myself, my team is available for phone calls, emails, meetings, whatever that may be. And we do come out to the community during the year to have these discussions periodically through the neighborhood council as well. And before I continue, one of the main items that we keep, one of the questions that we keep getting asked is, "Well, what parts of these budgets is affected by these measures?" And it's a relatively simple answer, and that is essentially, within measure J, K, and L, there is, this budget essentially cannot happen as it has been happening over the past several years. We cannot, we cannot continue to fund these services if any one, any single one of these particular measures is passed.
Oh, we're gonna, whole question is still the end. Thank you.
Okay, so recently, the city council passed, adopted an ordinance, passed an ordinance that prohibits the general fund from subsidizing any special district. So...
Excuse me, excuse me. Alex, excuse me. I know you came in late for folks in the back, my apologies, but I did make an announcement that to keep this evening efficient, have everybody get a chance to get the information and be able to have people ask questions that have not yet been answered by the presentation or questions that were pre-submitted, we're holding all questions till the end. Mr. Starr, Wolf, you can hold that question to the end. Thank you.
So as an example, if your relatively new neighbors across the highway in Wagon Wheel, if they were to go through this process and defund their CFD, we would not divert your CFD funds to provide services for them, and likewise, we will not redivert the city's general fund to subsidize any special district if the residents want to defund their own special district. That's the principle behind that ordinance, and I'm gonna hand it off to our post chief.
Thank you, Alex. So Jason Benitez, the chief of police here, been with the city for about thirty-one years. Back in two thousand four to two thousand six, I was one of the district commanders for North Oxnard, so I know a number of you from back then. What I want to start off with, I've got about a dozen slides. Actually, the police portion is a significant topic of discussion, depending on which Facebook group you're in. And it is a common question about what we're actually doing and what, how does it work? So there's different, let me just start with the, I want to start off with the basic overview and kind of the higher overarching facts about how our beat system works and patrol officers work, how that, how those services are provided to you and how they're funded. Then start working your way down towards CFD Five and then specifically speak to the River Park neighborhood. So with that, our department is, you know, a fairly large, medium-sized city. We're about the twenty-second largest city in the state, so proportionally, in terms of police departments, we're about that. We're divided into three major bureaus, and the one I'm going to speak about is the Field Services Bureau, which contains our patrol division. We have, within this patrol division, there are eleven police beats. These are areas that are defined for officers to work within. They're assigned areas. Ten of these beats actually operate on a twenty-four-seven basis, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. The eleventh beat, the central business district downtown, is kind of, has more flexible hours and collapses down with time. So with that, the police department, we've got two hundred and forty-two authorized sworn positions in our department. For years, just like many of the police departments in California, and I'll even say in this country, we are struggling with high vacancy rates. We currently have twenty-two vacancies as I speak today, which is about nine percent. That does not include those persons that are in the academy or in field training or on their own. Doesn't include those that are injured and out on the injury list. Doesn't include those persons that are out on various types of leave, whether it's family leave or military leave. So when you double that, when you start looking at the numbers of operational vacancies, that number of twenty-two goes up to probably closer to forty-six, maybe even fifty. So suffice it to say, staffing is a big challenge. And I'll speak to this later, but in terms of vacancy rates, why do I bring this up? This brings up one of the reasons why the enhanced police services is funded through overtime. And I'll speak to more to that in a moment or two. So within the police department, there are three patrol shifts. There's a day shift, an evening shift, and a morning shift, which actually starts late at night. Starts, starts, starts just about now. And there's usually one officer per beat, per shift that goes out, sometimes more. Sometimes we do have issues with people calling in or having something come up at the last minute. But these positions, these shifts are funded by the general fund. And as I mentioned, because of our staffing, we are forced to actually do two things that are kind of tough on an organization. And the first is to mandate overtime. So if a patrol shift comes open, that we have to do everything we can to make sure it's filled, which includes mandating, mandating people to work the shifts. So with that, for about the past two years, we've actually had specialty assignment officers. In other words, detectives, school resource officers, beat coordinators, for example, covering patrol shifts during their weeks. They're kind of diverted away from their principal duties to go cover these patrol shifts. Each patrol beat has a police corporal that is known as the beat coordinator, and I think you introduced Jack Martin back here. He's been here, he was here on the August fourteenth meeting, and I think he gave his first update to the neighborhood then. And the beat coordinator is this two-striper, who's generally, you can see what their responsibilities are. That's to coordinate, they're a member of the neighborhood policing team. Their job is to actually identify community safety issues in that area, engage with the public, as well as direct problem-solving resources within an area. This, Jack's office, happens to be at the collection storefront where he reports to and does some of his other work, but that's basically his base of operations. This position is also provided by the general fund, so every beat in the city does have this. Drilling down towards Beat Fourteen, this is the area in which Corporal Martin oversees as the beat coordinator is the beat that has the River Park neighborhood and contains CFD Five. CFD Five does not go anywhere outside of Beat Fourteen, so it's self-contained within that area. Now, Beat Fourteen, which I've said is covered by the patrol officers, has, in addition to River Park, it has five additional neighborhoods and two shopping centers, which you see here. El Rio West, Wagon Wheel, South Bank, Sierra Linda, and Orchard. And then the Espinon and the Collection are two other areas within that beat. And in the last meeting, Jack Martin presented a snapshot of kind of what the calls-for-service picture looks like in Beat Fourteen. And this is really no different than most months. This is kind of how you typically see it. This is a heat map, and so areas where it'd look warmer actually have higher call density, more calls for service. And as you can see, you kind of see where the area is here. The area that you see in the oranges to red, that is actually the Collection, but it is also the area immediately surrounding that too. I believe there are about half a dozen apartment complexes there. There are more people living in that area. And a natural outcome of more people generally results in more calls for service. But the point to this slide here is that, is that River Park is not the only, it's not the only neighborhood in Beat Fourteen that our officers, that our patrol officers are responsible for problem-solving enforcement and all that. So taking a closer look at CFD Five in this particular designed area, this is another heat map. This is actually a full year's worth of data for calls for service. We categorize calls for service from emergency plus being the highest, and it goes one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Generally, emergency plus, one, two, and three are those calls when somebody picks up the phone and says they need somebody from the police department to respond. Those are the calls that we're tracking for the purposes of this map. So CFD Five had about twenty, a little over twenty-seven hundred calls in it last year. If you look at the breakdown, about sixty-four percent of them are in the River Park neighborhood, and the other thirty-six percent were in the Collection. Now, one thing that I needed to point out, though, also with the beat cars that I mentioned, is that they work, the beat, the patrol car from day, evening, and morning shift. They are also not just responding to River Park, but they go to other neighborhoods. They also go to other beats. So there are times, yes, when patrol resources are busy and there actually is not a car in the neighborhood at the time. Conversely, patrol units from outside of the area can also end up in River Park or Beat Fourteen for drawing. So I do want to point that out, and again, those are the general fund cars. This is a response to one of the questions that was brought up earlier about how safe is our neighborhood. So let's take a look at just crime in general. And this is twenty-twenty-three's reported crime under the National Incident-Based Reporting System. The number of crimes, we wanted to just show like a neighborhood comparison of how our, how this neighborhood compares to all the rest of the city. And the answer to that is, it simply is a very average, in terms of comparisons, it's not higher. It's not, it's not in the lowest, but it's not above average. Should give you a general idea. Looking at the Collection and the Espinon, now those are areas of high retail, there are a lot of visits. And generally, as a natural consequence with things like that, you do see higher crime rates or higher concentrations of calls. People ask, "What type of calls do we get in River Park?" This is a look of call types, the top ten call types that our officers are responding to. And I mentioned priority, emergency, priority one, priority two, priority three calls. These are it, and they're very consistent with a lot of the other calls that we get across the city. Looking at CFD Five as a whole, this bar chart shows actually kind of how that does split off between the Collection and the, and River Park in terms of the call volume loads. So again, subject disturbing is generally one of our biggest, biggest call types. Now, looking at the overtime detail that we have for CFD Five, I want to spend a little time on that. Is that in terms of, this has been in place since the formation of the CFD. It is something that, as I mentioned, it's that we prefer to staff on overtime. The beat coordinator assigns, identifies, and assigns particular overtime shifts. And I say that again, overtime shifts. And these added shifts are placed for a variety of reasons, mainly either to address traditional call volume trends or particular problems that are in your neighborhood. So for example, package thefts or some other issues that does come up. Currently, you'll see that the, when this deployment is going as it is today, it's typically, Jack, it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, four to two, and we have one to two patrol officers working that area. They're in CFD Five. Now, I've been asked, why is it we are, I've heard some comments about why we are choosing that. It is actually that time of the day, or these times, during this time of the year, these days and these time periods are traditionally higher call volume times citywide. It gets busy, especially particularly in the summer months, so they're there for that reason. Now, when an officer signs up for one of these shifts, they receive specific instructions from Corporal Martin or beat coordinator, and there are some expectations that are laid out for them and that they are expected to report back on, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. Now, people have asked why these shifts are on overtime. And I think that that word has been kind of thrown around, kind of, I would say, in a way that I think is well worth explaining, is that the advantages to having overtime versus straight time are very different. It really focuses, the starting point has to do with flexibility, and it's not confining the services of a police officer to a forty-hour block that's wedged away in one corner of the week. So bear in mind, if you do that, you lose the flexibility to put them elsewhere if needed. So overtime can be put where it's needed. Overtime hours, they can be spread across the calendar, like I said various times. With overtime, we can place multiple officers on a particular problem at a particular time versus having one officer there for forty hours a week, if that makes sense. And then when demands change or new problems arise, we can shift, quickly shift. And so I would submit to say that as we go closer to the year, there'll be some types of shifts that will take place in the posting of the overtime shifts. So when they sign up for a shift, I summarized the written instructions that they receive from the corporal that they report back to. Essentially, to be proactive, go out there and do things to generate work. If, find something to do, stay busy, monitor the police radio, limit time in one area, so we don't want them parked. We want them to be highly visible so that you see cars going around your neighborhood, because just the visibility on its own has some deterrent factor. Very important to get to calls as fast as possible. Now, the fact that these cars are working in this beat, in addition to the patrol resources, actually help keep the response times down. Resource availability means faster response times. That's, take it to the bottom line of that. They're encouraged to interact with the residents, talk to people, communicate with the residents. That's why we're here. And that there are instructions that the River Park overtime detail only responds to Espinon or Wagon Wheel. to Espinon or Wagon Wheel areas in cases of emergency. So the issue has come up. Sometimes these officers are, are known to have left CFD five to go handle something. Yes, there are instances where they may be outside of the CFD because of the, the dire emergency takes place. At times, there have been traffic stops that have started in River Park, but the cab record shows that they're at Wagon Wheels, for example, Wagon Wheel or Boulevard. People are saying, oh, you're leaving the beat. Well, that may have been an issue that started in River Park. A theft suspect, for example, last year, there was an instance where a person was a target and stolen something, the officers contacted them outside of CFD five. Yeah, that happens. The officers are directed towards these specific issues. So people ask, well, what are the officers actually doing? And so I, we pulled some data on just showing like the top ten activities that the officers working this enhanced detail are doing. And this is it. Again, there, this, this includes not just responding to calls like the earlier maps showed, but this actually shows what they're doing. If they're generating their own activity during that, that shift, this reflects that. I wanted to bring your attention to four out of these ten happen to be engaging in traffic enforcement. That is the number two activity that these officers are involved in. And when, every time I go to public groups, one of the biggest complaints I get from neighborhoods are traffic-related. And I've spoken in public meetings about Oxnard's traffic issues. Subject stop, that's stopping people, talking to them. That oftentimes ends up in a self-initiated arrest. Skipping down, you'll see parking violations. We do have a lot of complaints from the neighborhoods about park, about, about parking. And this is them spending that time on those issues, as well as foot patrols. This is data that is taken just from the past fiscal year. They went from July first of last year till June thirtieth of this year. And during that time, that River Park car handled five hundred and sixty-five different events during that time. So it is, it is keeping active. So people have asked, what will happen if this goes away? And, and I do not want to, I just want to tell you literally what happens. I'm not here to spread fear or anything like that. Chief, what's going to happen? What can we reasonably expect? Well, the slides kind of say it all. You'll have a decreased police presence in your neighborhood. With that, there are decreased proactive efforts. There are, there'll be a decreased availability of police resources in River Park. And because they do have to service other portions of the beat, when times where the patrol cars are outside of River Park, if there's no supplemental car here, there's, there's nobody here. And the calls will have to pen longer. We do have to recognize that they do have other areas that they are responsible for responding to. The storefront at the Collection, we currently have a one-dollar lease there with the Collection. We have some other costs that are incurred with operating that, that will close. And the B coordinator will have to relocate. We recently had an office space off of Espinon Drive, but that building has actually since been demolished. So you'll be placing that B coordinator into a different area. But it's also important to point out that when officers work a beat, generally they take their meal breaks or they do their report writing either in that beat or as close to that beat as possible. Not having a place to park or to put themselves, they will likely go somewhere else. And that means more than likely that the police station is, is one of the other options or another storefront in another beat. But what happens is they're not here. And so if something emergent does happen, they're that less, they're that much further away from responding. And all these lend to longer response times to police calls. So that's something that, when I mentioned staffing issues and things like that, we're, we have a very tough time holding the line with response times. And so this just simply, I'm just going to say, just doesn't help. And then because of that, the CFD money was used for problem-solving efforts. For example, if there was a package theft problem, we would be able to set up operations with that overtime to go, put an undercover car out, to do things to address that. With that, that capacity is diminished. Not gone, but it is, it is diminished. So now we're just relying on general fund overtime. And on top of that, I, I mentioned this decreased crime prevention through environmental design. If anybody's heard about that topic, it's generally, our B coordinators practice that. They actually do make, they do assessments for residents, they do them for businesses. But I think at the last meeting, we talked about things as simple as a tree trimming cycle, going from one year, where it is now, potentially to something like the city, which is five years. What happens when trees start overgrowing, they overgrow the lights, the areas are not as well-kept? That actually becomes a, something that is more of a public safety concern. It's the environment. And so by being able to see things, identify problems before they become problems, we think that actually lends towards crime prevention. So again, not here to scare anyone, but this, these are just some very practical, practical anticipated outcomes if this is eliminated.
So I'd like to note here, just for this slide, this is to give a little bit of perspective citywide, what special districts does. And here is a map of what this division manages across the entire city. If you were ever curious as to whether or not River Park was the only CFD, no, there are a few other CFDs. You'll notice there are some down in the waterway areas, there's one out at the Sackville Farms area. And we have one that is currently coming online just north of the waterways in the exit canal, more short, Mandalay Bay area. Special district staff manages each one of these districts individually. And one of the things that I'd like to point out as a part of this map is this map is effectively, also delineates where these funds for each individual district are kept. The River Park funds stay in River Park, they stay in CFD number five. So that purple area at the top of the map is where your funds are spent. You cannot spend or communitate any of those funds in any of the other districts. But we do manage this district individually to all of these others. However, as you can also see, the size of CFD five, we spend a large amount of our time, specifically here, tending to the needs of this, of this community. So I'm going to move to the next slide here and go over the, the difference, differentiation between the, the maximum and the applied special tax rates. One of the questions we get consistently on an annual basis is, what is the maximum special tax? Well, I don't want to make it sound like such a light topic, because it is, obviously, it's a lot of money. But the maximum special tax is effectively a math problem. When the CFD is created, each one of the properties that was built in this area is put into a property classification. Your special tax is not based on the value of your home. It's based on how many square footage of improved spaces within your, within your property space. And then for commercial areas, it's based on total square footage of commercial areas. That places your property into a specific category, which has been essentially placed within a, a line item within, within the, the special tax formation documents for the district. And a maximum is simply what's the theoretical maximum that based on that, that rate that was set back when the development was created of how many units and properties do you have multiplied by those maximum amounts? The district has never taxed this, or never taxed residents and, and property owners at the maximum rate. I want to point out the blue line here. The blue line here is your applied tax rate. So annually, since fiscal year two thousand and eight, all the way up to this current fiscal year, the actual applied special tax has ranged anywhere from between fifty to, depending on the year, fifty to eighty percent. That applied tax rate is affected by a number of factors. And those are up there in that box there. That can be affected by CIP projects for the area, inflation, adopted, you know, the overall adopted budget. The overall adopted budget may actually be above and beyond what the applied special tax rate is. That is primarily due to the fact that the city will use reserve funds that are kept within your district to fund other services within the CFD that are above and beyond what the special tax actually is applied at. So if, for example, the city has twenty-five cents in reserve funds, the budget could be a dollar twenty-five, and the city would then levy a dollar special tax, just as a hypothetical. And one thing I wanted to point out here too is that during the last couple of fiscal years, there is a note here. Did you see, during fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, the special tax rate actually was lower than it was all over ten years ago. And part of the reason for that is because reserve funds that had been built up over time were used to apply to lower your special tax rate within those fiscal years. When we are able to recommend that be done, my division, my staff recommends that do happen. However, that cannot always happen annually or, or due to a number of factors. And I will say primarily due to the fact that there are large projects that this CFD does fund. And I will go to our next slide, which will explain what some of those projects could be. So this is a part of our city-approved CIP. You can find this on the city's website. It's part of the, the CIP that lists every project citywide. And these individual items here are all specific to the River Park area, except for this one here, which is shared with our other CFDs. That shared area is only because they have similar improvements. Each CFD would pay for its own specific items within that project. Why we don't recommend providing a levy credit every single year to keep that special tax artificially low is simply because if we don't have built-up reserves for specific projects, there is the, the very real possibility that if a project is to come up and there aren't reserve funds to pay for it, as there should be in prudent financial planning, that would have to be applied to your applied rate. So if, for example, there is in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, a plan for a three-hundred-thousand-dollar payment for a new playground, rather than tax you in that fiscal year, we would use reserve funds to, to basically defray that cost and make it, so it doesn't impact the district all in one year. I can absolutely answer your question specifically after we're done. I'm more than happy to. And then I, so that is effectively what the applied versus maximum rates are and what really goes into the budget besides just your annual services that come in and out of, of the River Park special tax funds.
Hi, the mic. Just advance a slide, please. All right, so thank you to our staff here for giving the overview of those items. And just to kind of wrap things up on the presentation portion, it was asked after the previous meeting that we cover the property tax bill that all of you receive who are homeowners. And I apologize, the lighting makes it difficult. We will make these slides available after the fact if folks would like them. That's not a problem. But if you can see on this, there's a number of charges there on the property tax bill. And this is one that was submitted for us to share. And you can see there are a number of school bonds on there. There's the Prop thirteen maximum one percent tax, which everybody will get. And then we have the Oxnard, the City of Oxnard District one bond, and then the Alreal School CFD one bond. The yellow line, and if you can use the, there you go. That yellow line there is what we're all talking about tonight and what is on the ballot measures that are facing you. And that single yellow line is all we're talking about. If any of the measures pass, whether it be I, J, K, L, that's the one line that'll be affected one way or the other. And just to make it clear, for example, if it were to, if we had measure J pass, then all those other ones, all those other charges you see there are going to stand. They're still going to be under property tax bill. You're not going to get down to zero or close to zero or have significant changes, which will show on the next slide in just a moment. But I also want to point out that those school bonds are also set to expire. I think it's, do we say it's eleven years? Many of them are, eleven years from now, you're, you know, almost two-thirds of the way through them. And when they expire, that actually will affect your CFD five if it stands after this November. So keep those things in mind. These are all interconnected, even though they are paid to different entities. The school district, those bonds were approved by the voters, and that's why they're there. Those will eventually expire, and there are some there that are there to stand. And I think the highway interchange is one that expires as well. So with that being said, as measure I, as the city manager mentioned, if that one, the voters decide to approve that one, measure I would keep everything as it has been. The changes will be though, that anything that is currently not charged to your CFD, even though it's in the formation documents, will be jettisoned. They will no longer ever be able to be added to your CFD. And so this is not a status quo measure. There are changes in that you will have things drop off that will never be added to the CFD. And the fire service was an example that was used. And I do want to clarify too, it doesn't mean you won't receive fire service if there's a structured fire, like they will come out. It doesn't mean you won't receive ambulance service. It's just that your CFD will not be charged for those general services. All right, we can go to the last slide here. And looking at it just from a mathematical perspective, just objectively, if voters choose to eliminate CFD five through these initiatives, the property tax reduction is estimated about seventeen point eight percent. For some of the average bills, that would be about a hundred and fifty dollars a month. So keep in mind, all those other things that we talked about, those are unaffected by what is in front of you in November. It's solely for that yellow line for CFD five. All right, so with that, we have a couple of questions that I, again, thank folks for pre-submitting. Many of them were covered by the presentation itself. But I do want to revisit a couple of them, just for folks who may have come in a little late or just so that we can, you know, just validate what was stated there. So I'm going to ask a couple of these questions. We have our staff here who can answer. Again, we have our public works and our assistant public works directors here, as well as some other staff. So just to start here, the, under the potential impacts of the measures, which was what most of the questions were about, can we just speak to, in layman's terms, what could happen or what will happen to River Park's public parks if funding is removed? Will the parks see less maintenance if any of the three D funding measures are passed?
So specifically, that's, that's really will be a question for city council after this point. In effect, with the ordinance that has been passed, the general fund won't step in to subsidize park services to the level of their services right now. By and large, they would likely revert to whatever services have been provided citywide. I cannot tell you what exactly that would be.
And Mr. Howlett, did you want to add anything or are we good on that one?
Can I just ask pertaining to that? How does HOA, which I assume pays for all that, how does that figure in to your, to the Mella Roots tax?
And I'm going to repeat the question. So how does the HOA factor into this as well, when we talk about like the Mella Roots?
For the parks and keeping up all of the grounds that we see. I thought that's what HOA does.
So specifically, the HOAs in this area maintain areas that would be considered basically private spaces for the neighborhoods. So areas like structure front yards. In some particular areas, parkways are maintained by the HOAs or private homeowners. None of the public spaces within the CFD are maintained by HOA funds. The HOA and the CFD are completely separate.
So remember the roundabouts, those round, when I see that seasons truck, whatever it's called?
No, so Four Seasons Landscaper, for example, that is not funded at all by your HOA.
Thank you. The next question we have here regarding measures J, K, and L. We were told that we can pick and choose what we want to keep and get rid of. So is there a measure that solely gets rid of things, or the school services that the CFD five funds?
Specifically, the school services aren't affected by measure J, K, or L. Besides, that was today, the CFD landscaping portions on school areas such as the ball fields back here, that is a portion of the CFD. That is the only portion of school services that would be affected by this.
And the gymnasiums?
Gymnasium areas, you said.
Where we are here, yes. And as a, this one was related, but I think it's a good follow-up. If these propositions, or these measures pass, will we be able to keep the things that are working good for well and only get rid of the stuff that isn't working?
So that's a complicated question. If these measures were to pass, they're, they're deeply affecting the CFD structure in this area. If measure J is passed exactly, it would be effectively nothing provided by the CFD because it would no longer exist. K and L would also severely restrict what funds the CFD would either receive or be able to spend money on. There wouldn't really be a way of picking and choosing what we could keep or not keep based on what the CFD can provide. There's, it would probably more than, I would say, I actually, I don't want to say anything further because prioritizing would end up being more than likely a council decision.
Why don't you have the author of the measure?
And to build upon that, I would like to share that the, a ballot measure, when it goes to us, to the voters, that's the highest voice in the land. Whatever the ballot measure says, if we approve it, that's now what is set in stone. Only the voters can come and change that later. Only the voters can come and change that later. And so right now, in the way the CFD is set up, as Anthony had mentioned, every budget season, starting after the winter, after the holidays, budget discussion starts with the Neighborhood Council. Your entire community is invited to join those meetings. And I see our Neighborhood Council Chair, Mr. Chevlin, is here. Those meetings allow you, as was mentioned, to look at what do we like that's happening? What do we think needs to be improved? Where can we move money around for what we would like to see? This year is an example where residents advocated for, from the previous fiscal year, for additional police services. And in adjusting the budget, we're able to get $97,000 more dedicated to enhanced police service because that's what they wanted, that's what the residents have asked for. That flexibility is what you will have in the CFD. But if the voters go for what these measures have, well, now the measures dictate what you can and cannot do. And so I'll use the overtime that the chief was mentioning earlier. One of the measures says that you cannot use overtime for police services. If that measure were to pass, that's now the law of the land. The chief has no discretion in that. You residents no longer have discretion because that's what the measure says. And so with that, if it were to pass, if later, a year, six months, 18 months, whatever, residents realize, you know what, this isn't working. We don't really like the full time or the straight time. Can we go back to the flexibility of overtime so we could do, you know, these night shifts that are, where we're having a lot of issues coming up? Well, no. The measure said it's straight time. And so that now only you as voters can change that, meaning you'd have to do that process that Mr. Starr did of writing it, having it checked, having, I guess, having it checked by a lawyer or whatever needs to be done to ensure it's, meaning what is needed. Go, gather signatures, file it with the city clerk, file it with the county, pay your fees, and then go through that process. And who is willing to do that? So keep those things in mind. All right, so the last one on here, these others were answered by the presentation. Excuse me, there's two more. So, and maybe the city manager might take this one, perhaps, Anthony. If passed, what will these measures do to the city's long-term planning and vision for community development? What potential long-term consequences can be anticipated in River Park and throughout the city?
That's an interesting question. In my mind, if these pass bluntly, the quality of the neighborhood will go down.
Excuse me, we'll get the Q and A in a few moments.
Question, I'm going to give my opinion. So I really think the overall value of the neighborhood will go down.
Mr. Partillo, everyone else is sitting here quietly. Like, let's give the same respect, please.
And with, I mean, it's an interesting question, but what does it do with the long-term planning and vision of community development? It would mean this neighborhood wouldn't be, at some point, it probably wouldn't be touted as one of the premier neighborhoods in the county, in Oxnard. What potential long-term consequences can be anticipated in River Park throughout our city? It's, it's gonna, it's gonna get worse. I'm just giving you my blunt response. I'm gonna, I think last time when I was here, I mentioned the irony of how, can you put back the map of the special districts? How the perception and the frustration of the south side of the city is antithetical to up here. So remember, it's the bright colors on this map that have the special taxes. The majority of the city does not. So I get what we at City Hall, certainly the council members, and then I sometimes get these specific messages. Here's one I received just over a week ago, August 28th. This is from two residents and husband and wife in South Oxnard, and I'm going to read you a few quick excerpts. "I'm becoming increasingly concerned about the increase of homeless/vagrants in the area and what appears as a neglect to the south side of Oxnard. The contrast between the north side of Oxnard and south side are pretty blatantly apparent and seem pretty unjust. South Side Oxnard contributes just as much in taxes. Every time I have that discussion, I have to have this explanation, and I have to actually say to people, no, that's not true. All these neighborhoods actually pay a special tax above and beyond the general property tax that the rest of us pay." One more. "That is not fair to any of us who live in South Oxnard, watching our neighborhoods become deplorable, seeing how our property values decrease because of the conditions of their surrounding areas as we witness other areas prospering more." So there's, it's been a struggle for this city over many years to keep up with deferred maintenance and ongoing maintenance. We are getting better at that. But there's, there's the rest of the city and then there's the neighborhoods that have these special taxes so that everything looks nicer, feels nicer, is nicer. So if, again, it is your choice if you want to defund that. But you cannot expect the level of services and amenities that you have today if you defund it. That's it. So when people keep saying, what's the bottom line? That is the bottom line. Thank you.
And this last question on impacts, and then we'll move into the police chief's questions here. If Measure I were to pass, and I know we answered this, but I want to get it stated again for the record. If Measure I were to pass, would there be a new tax implemented?
No.
That's a quick one. Before we move on, I do have the CIP here. Just for context, I did ask that we have the cities, the citywide capital improvement program here printed. It's a binder. It's a great read. I have to go through it whenever we update it. But it has some really good insight, actually, especially when I have residents ask from other neighborhoods, when is my streets getting paved? When are my playgrounds getting replaced? When are my alleys getting done? When are my cast iron pipes getting replaced that are 70 years old? If those projects are on the queue or in the capital improvement program, they're here. But this is the queue, this is the list of things that are waiting to be done citywide. They are prioritized, and they have funding, and some of them have no funding, but they're on the list. For CFD 5, I asked for their capital improvement projects or programs to be printed out. It is these pages here. It's a couple of pages. And I just want to point out, that's citywide, and this is strictly for your neighborhood, for CFD 5. And as Anthony had mentioned, the reserves are intended to cover these things. And the question was asked, can we see the capital improvement program? Yes, we have these printed out. Please feel free afterwards to come peruse these. We can send these out to folks too if they want to leave their email address or contact information. But I wanted this visual where you see what we're talking about as far as scope and load of work across the city versus just your CFD. And you can see them there visually. All right, so we have a few questions for the chief now that will cover police questions. And then we will go to any Q and A that we have for things that haven't been asked yet or we'd like clarification on. All right, so we answered the question around overtime versus paying them at the regular rate. Is there anything else you'd like to elaborate on that with that chief? I think it felt like you covered that comprehensively, but if you have anything else for it?
I think so. I see one question I can expound on outside of the topic of overtime. But on the overtime item, I think I've pointed out the number of reasons why it is actually applied versus the straight time rate. I also want to point out too, when overtime rates being billed to CFD 5, there are no other employee benefit costs that are rolled up into that. Not versus a straight time 40-hour position, there are per's rates. There are all the benefits that come in on top of the officer's basic salary. So keep that in mind. Another thing to keep in mind is that with respect to being, losing the option of overtime and being relegated to a straight time employee, I can tell you, as I mentioned, 22 vacancies in the police department. We can't afford to pull another resource away from the rest of the city to move it up here on straight time, even if it was the option that we had. And I bring this up because when you look at the map behind me and you hear what Mr. Nguyen just spoke to as far as the south Oxnard, when you look at the light colored areas, the places with lower reported crime, and you go further south, those colors get, they do get to be darker. There's a different set of problems down in the south Oxnard that need to be addressed. So if I was to ask, if I had to choose between the two neighborhoods, the south Oxnard clearly has a compelling case for more officers in that area.
All right, and that's with respect to the General Fund, correct?
Yes, General Fund.
This is not a question that was submitted, but it's one that came to mind as you were presenting, and I think it goes along the lines of overtime. If for some reason, such as due to the staffing challenges that you mentioned within policing, if for some reason, no one signed up for the overtime shifts, because it sounds like it is a sign-up process, but if no one did, would the CFD be charged if nobody worked that particular shift?
No, and as a result, there are some unspent monies in various fiscal years when you see the imbalance during a fiscal year where it's not spent. I believe it was about 80% spent in the last fiscal year, but there are times when the overtime isn't completely used. And generally, from speaking to the beat coordinator, it indicated that about 80 to 85% of the shifts that the beat coordinators post do get filled. And bear in mind, these are supplemental shifts. We don't mandate the officers to work them. We do mandate the officers to work the core shifts that the General Fund is paying for. So there will always be a car that is assigned to your beat.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask them a question about the overtime? When you have officers at nighttime on Friday night and Saturday night in the collection where they're entering at Starbucks and Whole Foods, that would be considered overtime where they're at nighttime guiding people to come in or to direct them to their taking turns and directing? Those aren't officers.
I think you might be referring to the security element that's at, yeah?
Thank you. And we're almost to a Q and A portion here. But that did, that did pertain, so that's, that's fine. But the other kind of additional thing I have here, I just want it to be clear for folks, objectively clear, that this is not fear mongering, this is trying to be objective. This is potentially what the outcome could be. So if the CFD were eliminated or reduced in such a way that you no longer have the enhanced police services, you wouldn't not have police services, it's just that it wouldn't be dedicated to your neighborhood on those particular nights, those details that are dedicated and paid by the CFD. So the CFD goes away or no longer pays for those shifts, you still have police service, it's just now you're sharing it with the rest of Beat 14, just as you do on the days you don't have the enhanced services. It's just, it would be like that 24/7 now. And as the chief showed in the slide, Beat 14 is a fairly sizable beat. A lot of it falls into the district that I serve, in District 2. And you can see Sierra Linda, Orchard Park there, Wagon Wheel, South Bank, and River Park in Oreal West. And there's a lot of stuff that goes on within the beat. But if there's a call for service that is higher priority than one elsewhere in the beat that is higher priority than what you have in River Park, you will have to wait for that call to be responded to just because they have to get prioritized. So, all right, we got just a couple more, and then we'll go to hands up and questions from the audience. All right, so there is a kind of personal question here, chief, but I think there's a good answer to this too. And it was asking, would you feel comfortable with your loved ones living in River Park? Do you feel it's safe, in your opinion? You went over some of the crime data and calls for service data, but I'll let you, if you want to respond to that, and I have a quick thing for it.
Thank you, absolutely. Say, one of the things that people choose when they want to go live somewhere is the first question is, is it safe? And I will tell you, I said that this is kind of an average level for reported crime in our city. It is a safe neighborhood overall. And I say this because also looking at just the nature of call types. This is, this is what I alluded to earlier, what your, the top 10 call types, subject disturbing, check the wellbeing, these are, these aren't, you don't have the same set of problems as other parts of the city or of this county. They are, they are more mundane, and I don't want to, I don't want to be dismissive of that, but they are not the same problems. Violent crime is not the main problem in this community. Generally, we're here to work on some of the other things, the property crimes and the quality of life issues, whether it's a parking, a parking item. But one thing is asked me, what makes this neighborhood so safe? And if you ask me candidly, I would say that there is a good degree of crime prevention through environmental design in place in River Park. And whether you are, whether, how you feel about the fountain not working or something else not getting done, things are, those things by and large are relatively comparable to a high-quality neighborhood. When you drive through this neighborhood, you see a clean place. And with that, I think that's where people prefer to live. And I would absolutely feel comfortable living in this neighborhood.
All right, thank you. And as a follow-up, I just, I think it's not a secret that not only Oxnard police officers, but officers from other agencies live in River Park as well. So the question of, do you feel safe or would you have your family? Well, they, I think, have voted with where they've chosen to live as well. All right, we talked about ordinance 3047, so we'll, I think that one was pretty clear. The last thing here, in a General Fund playground, a General Fund playground's equipment versus CFD 5 playground equipment. So what is the average lifespan of playground equipment? How long does it take for the equipment that has met its lifespan to be replaced? And we have Mr. Howlett here, our Assistant Public Works Director.
Thank you. So in terms of the life, the useful life of a playground equipment is anywhere between 12 and 15 years. Now, that's the recommended useful life. There's factors that come into play, like how much impact or use does that playground equipment get? Does it get a lot of play? Is it a playground that gets some play but can last a long time? Also, the environment, is it close to the ocean? That'll eat it up real quick. So we found that out with the Olakoi Beach Park. That one's high up now on our list to get replaced. So 12 to 15 years. Now, the benefit of a CFD or another assessment district is, as Anthony said, the money that you're assessed stays in the neighborhood. So you, as the residents, can meet with the Neighborhood Council and say, you know what? We want to replace our playground next year. We don't want to wait four more years. We're ready for it to be replaced now. You can make that decision. You don't have to wait with all the other General Fund parks. So what I have right now is I have a list of all the playgrounds from worst to best. And that's the order that we're taking the playgrounds in. We've got two that are completely fenced off right now, and they've been fenced off for a couple of years. So we're working on, those are our top two priorities. We're getting close. So with the CFD, you as residents, just like with the trees, you can, you can trim your trees every year. You can decide, work with Anthony and your Neighborhood Council and say, you know what? We want to save some money, and we want to prune our trees every other year. That's all up to you. If that goes away, now you're working with the same system that the rest of the city is. So the useful life is, it, a lot of variables, but if it's not a CFD, then you really don't have a choice. It goes in with the rest of the city playgrounds for replacement.
Thank you, Mr. Howlett. Chief, thank you. And Mr. Howlett reiterated something that was stated earlier by Mr. Miller as far as your CFD 5 funds. The funds that you pay into your mellow roots pay only for your mellow roots. They stay in your neighborhood. They are not commingled with other districts or with the General Fund. And I will just say, because I've seen the narrative, if you ever see or you hear someone say that your special tax for your CFD is being siphoned to the General Fund or some other fund, that's false. It's illegal, and it's false. I challenge you to challenge them to show you where that's happening, how that's happening, because we can sit down with you and show you that it's not happening in black and white. So, all right, with that, we're now going to the questions. I am going to, let me show you, let me explain how we're going to do this. Thank you, sir. We're going to call on one person at a time, and I see hands are up, so you don't have to keep your hand up a long time, because otherwise, I know it's great to get arm exercise, but I'll be merciful as a facilitator tonight. We'll start to the left and work our way here, and then go back like this, okay? So remember, let's raise our hand. We'll be recognized. I'm going to repeat the question because we are recording the meeting. And then we'll have our panelists or any of our other staff answer the questions that are raised. So we'll start here on the left.
Yeah, there are, there are, this, right here in the river back, and I know it'll say, you know, damage right there on the fences, but I was listening to your Oxford State Council that Martin versus Boise was overturned. How is that going to change or how you're going to deal with it?
Great, I'll repeat the question, thank you. So the question is, how is Martin v. Boise and the grants passed decisions from the Supreme Court? How will that affect us services or addressing the issue of unhoused or vagrancy within the city? And do we want to start with the chief on that one?
Certainly. So it's a very broad overarching question. It doesn't just apply to River Park, but it applies to everywhere within the Ninth Circuit. This, what happened was, a few years ago, 2018, there was a court decision that basically precluded law enforcement from dismantling homeless encampments provided unless there was available shelter space. So, and that's why, over the years since then, as that court decision was in place, we saw proliferation of camps. Last month, the Supreme Court overturned that case with the Grants Pass versus Johnson case, which now says that we can now enforce camping on public property. So with that, because of that court case, camping on public property. So with that, because of that court case, the simplest thing that I can tell you is that what that does is it restores an additional option or an additional tool to us. Now, that doesn't mean in our first order of business is to go down and immediately dismantle camps. That strategy has failed over years because what you end up doing is you dismantle an encampment at location A, and on the next day, they're now at location B. Longer-term solutions need to apply. That's part of why we have our homeless liaison officers, our beat coordinators. They go out there with, the first option to do is to recognize that homelessness on its own is not a crime. There are other behaviors that go with it, but the point is to try to get people into sustainable services that can get them out of that situation. So with that said, sometimes enforcement is the appropriate option for us, and we will take that route, but generally, it's not always our default first response to a homeless encampment. And I believe you're referring to the river bottom here, which is actually county territory. The county sheriff recently started a homeless liaison team, and I think you may have seen them. I've been seeing them out here quite a bit in recent weeks.
All right, thank you. And then going this way, we'll start here in the front.
I have two for the officer. One, a couple of weeks ago, I saw, we saw it twice, there were taco trucks and taco stands in River Park on the sidewalk there in front of some of the condos, townhouses. What's that about? Are they legally there? Are they not supposed to be there? Are your officers allowed to remove them?
And just to repeat the question, she's asking about the pop-up taco stands that have a canopy and a burner, a grill, probably propane.
Exactly, and they were in River Park.
Yes, all right, and they were in River Park.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'd say, one of those, one of the community problems that keeps coming up, we do get complaints about that. I want to point out that there are enforceable means to dealing with that, but on the other side of that coin, California legislators passed a couple of bills last year that actually prohibited the enforcement or what they refer to as the criminalization of those operations. So basically, they've given, made it very, very, very difficult for law enforcement to come in and issue citations. They can issue civil citations for up to one hundred dollars, and these are not notice-to-appear citations in court, these are civil citations. So with that, the city has taken an alternate approach, and that is actually leading it through the fire department and code compliance in terms of the safety perspective, fire safety. And that's how they've been enforcing it. There's also issues related to right of way, but when you have these cooktops, these things, these propane stoves, unsafe. So what we are doing with those now, our neighborhood policing team, including Corporal Martin, Sergeant Silva back here, they go out a couple of times a week at random times, and they will go stop by dozens of these places. And at the end of the day, between the fire department, code compliance, and PD, PD's mostly there just for the security portion, they will seize grills, they will seize tents, they will seize cooking implements, and shut those places down. Thing is, they come right back. They go back and get resupplied, and in some cases, they open up the same night at the same location.
And county health?
I'll just say that county health is not...
Yeah, the health department, what about?
They're there, I would just be frank with you, they're not as present. They have limited resources, so a lot of this has fallen onto the states.
And I'll just add to that, that I don't know about that particular case, but it has been found that many of the ones that come into this area, not just Oxnard, tend to come from Hott County, and they are not local business owners or local residents. They come here because that's where people will purchase from them. And I just want to remind folks that some of these are multiple canopies placed in multiple places across the city owned by just a few individuals. And I keep saying that somebody's making money, but it's likely not the people serving the food. And so this really comes with, to evoke with your wallet decision as well as residents. They won't go somewhere if they're not getting money from it. And that's a decision that's made by somebody at that level. And as the chief mentioned, their thousands of dollars worth of equipment and food product can be confiscated, and that's something they factor in the cost of doing business for themselves. They have grills ready to go and more food ready to go, and that shows me that it's some type of organized element that's happening there. All right, and was there someone? Yes, go ahead.
Okay, my understanding of a town hall is to provide comprehensive information about the topic at hand, which the flyer said were these propositions on our ballot. So I would like to hear the other side. I would like to hear Mr. Starr speak about what he knows and feels is important about the proposition that he's put on the ballot.
Well, absolutely. As mentioned by the city manager, he's welcome to hold a town hall meeting as well. We are here to give you the information objectively on what's here. It's not, it's not a measures forum, it's not a debate. And prior to writing, and this is a question that came up last time, I don't remember being answered, was prior to writing these measures, when were the community meetings held by him to gather your input on what he wants written into them? And so...
It doesn't matter. It's on the ballot. We're all voters. We all need to know what we're voting for. And what is I, now we can compare the others.
You've represented all residents of Oxnard.
Excuse me, thank you. Your comment is noted, I appreciate it. But I've mentioned the structure of tonight is to give you all information, take that with what you would like. If you want more information from the proponent of them, he's here this evening, and again, he's welcome to hold a town hall meeting as well. So the gentleman behind you.
So your town hall notice says it's about these propositions.
It's not a debate, it's an informational session.
He cannot speak about the proposition that he authored.
He authored it. He's welcome to hold one and not invite others, us if you'd like.
Not if I...
Well, you should be into the last one.
Excuse, okay. We all agreed ahead of time that we're gonna be respectful, and one person speaking at a time, I appreciate that.
I'd like to complete my questions.
Okay, please, go ahead.
I lived in River Park for seven years. I owned a home here for seven years. I stopped the police before I bought my home to ask if the place was safe. And he said, yeah, we have these regular patrols. So in seven years, twice I saw somebody patrol. And I'm retired, so I'm home alive. In the last week, I've seen some, I've seen them three times. What happened? And I'll give you another example. I was coming home from the grocery store, and an erratic driver behind me was, I was coming off the alarm ramp, I got to the top where the light is, and she kept honking and honking and honking. There was nowhere for me to go, the light is red. So when the light turned green, I made my turn, she followed me, she tailgated me all the way to the collection. So I thought, I'm not gonna drive to my home, that doesn't make sense to let her know where I live. So I went to the substation at the collection, nobody was there. And then I called the police department when I did get home, and they said, well, nobody's ever there, you just have to come to the regular police department. So I don't feel that I'm getting extra service.
All right, I'll let the chief speak to the storefront real quickly.
I can say that the storefront, when it was staffed, it's not one of those locations that's continuously staffed. We want to keep the officers out in the field. There's not staff there. There, it is a drop-in center for the officers. We don't want them to take routes there. They don't work a desk waiting for people to walk up, so it's, so chances are if you do go there, there maybe, very well may not be somebody there.
So why do we pay for it to have it there?
But it's, I think I...
Why doesn't the collection subsidize that's the police service that's needed there? And I don't disrespect policemen. I have three close relatives that are retired from this county.
So just to, to your point, the collection actually does contribute to CFD five, and part of that does go towards, they do subsidize the storefront. They charge us a one-dollar rent per year. When you look at the value of storefront space, that is a very good discount. So they do put in towards that. I think to your point about what you see and what you didn't see, if you don't see officers, I think that's a matter of opinion. I could probably ask other people that see officers quite often. I see some heads nodding as I'm saying that. So I know there's just a difference in opinion on the matter.
And I'll just say that, and I say this respectfully, because a teacher said it to me one day, and it stuck with me, is that I've never seen a million dollars, but it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. And so maybe it's a good sign that they're not on your street all the time, because there are calls for service or there's a patrol.
I'm all over the neighborhood, I'm retired. I come and go at all times of the dining day.
Well, Corporal Martin is here, he can speak specifically to the shifts, how often they happen, where they go. So I invite you to connect with him afterwards, he'd have that objective information. And he's more than happy to chat with people, so. Okay, the gentleman behind you, and then the woman to your left.
So I appreciate this meeting, how you put it together professionally and set the standard. I appreciate the ways that listen to that, the audience. My two questions are, you covered how JK and L work together for passing or not passing. What happens if I passes, what percentage does it need, and how does that compare to other ones pass? Like, what are the technicalities of those two things? What percentage for I, and what if I pass, what happens if JK and L?
Thank you. I'm gonna invite our Assistant Chief City Attorney, Mr. Rozell, to come up. He has all of those details.
Can you repeat?
Oh, excuse me, yes, the question was, how do the, how do the measures interact, such as if measure I were to pass and any of the other ones pass? We already talked about just those three pass, how they interact with the other.
And what percentage does I need to pass?
Yes, and what's the percentage that I needs to pass?
Do you vote on I? Based on the impartial analysis of measure I, it takes a simple majority. I know Mr. Starr and his attorneys have a different position, but it is the city's position that because it does not increase the tax, it is not a tax increase, and hence a simple majority. So based on that process, if measure I gets more votes than JK or L, then those measures would not pass. There is poison pill language in measure I as well as JK and L. So measure I gets the most votes, then the Starr measures do not pass, and vice versa.
Thank you.
And do you vote on I?
You need to be a registered voter within CFD five. If you're only registered voters, being a property owner is not enough, you have to actually be registered to vote in the CFD, then you can vote yes or no on any of the measures.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell.
Thank you. And then, yes, next.
I have a couple of questions. I'm just curious, the gentleman here on the left, you said something about seventeen percent of the taxes went towards the city. So does that include money from the Melrose? That's my first question.
The answer is no. The Melrose tax stays in this neighborhood.
Okay, and the question was about the seventeen percent for property taxes.
Okay, my second question is for the police department. I'm wondering, because of the shortage of police that you mentioned, what, where do you fall percentage-wise or on what percentile do you fall in the county as far as your salary? Where do you measure up? How do you measure up?
Yeah, the question concerns about where Oxnard Police Department's officers fall within the county. And I, off the top of my head, I can't tell you what place they are in. I don't have it handy right now, but generally, what happens is bargaining units at each, at each city, whether it's or county, county sheriffs, deputies association, or different police associations from each respective police department negotiate with their, with their government, city government for their wages. What happens is that once one gets a contract, you'll often see the other ones going into negotiations. So it's kind of a moving target. So I, offhand, off the top of my head, I can't tell you where we rank amongst the five cities in the county and the one county law enforcement agency. I just don't have a handy answer for you.
Would it be safe to say we have competitive wages?
Yes, it's safe to say that we do have some competitive wages. We do offer some incentives to try to attract officers from other agencies to come to us. We do offer some of that. We do have those incentives. But speaking to the issue about vacancies, that is literally the number one problem plaguing law enforcement, especially in California for the past several years. We have departments that have, that pay very well, and I don't want to, I know there's an agency about thirty miles west of here that has a very serious vacancy rate. You know, there are a lot of things behind it, so we're not the only ones that are experiencing this.
And if, thank you. And just to add to that as well, the, the issue we have here isn't unique, as the chief mentioned, to the city of Oxnard. Police as a profession have fewer people going into the profession than we have people leaving it through retirement or choosing another career or whatever the case is. And so that's not unique to the city of Oxnard, it's something that's affecting the entire profession of being a police officer. So, all right, yes?
So I, you said seventeen percent of our taxes stay in the city of Oxnard, right? What about the sales tax in Oxnard that's eleven, that's the highest in all venture counties? Where does that money go? And because that red spot was at the, like, collection, shouldn't that sort of money go for police there? Like, why are we responsible for the collection? If eleven percent sales tax is being charged by all those stores, it's just the city of Oxnard.
Okay, so on the property tax, it's seventeen point six percent. Just want to be clear. Sales tax is not eleven, it's nine point two five.
It's the highest in this county though, right?
Yes.
More than eight thousand votes.
Yes, for now. The other cities are gonna catch up. Just wait and see. They're gonna catch up. So the sales tax is just as part of the general fund. But again, for the property tax, seventeen point six percent goes back to local cities, the rest goes to the county and state. A lot of that goes to education and public health. Sales tax, we get right now, I think we're at three percent. I think, is that, Katie, am I correct? We're at three percent.
City portion.
Right, that goes back to the city, the rest goes to the state. So just remember, thank you.
So in addition to that, regarding the question about the collection and police service, I think the chief mentioned it as well. The collection and other businesses that are within the CFD boundaries pay into the CFD as well. And so that would be, you know, they would also be entitled not only to enhanced services, but the fact that they also are a business entity within the city of Oxnard, they're entitled to the basic services of Beat fourteen responding to them. And so I think it was sixty-four percent, chief, of the calls for service are for residential calls.
Well, yes, I'm just questioning, if that, that feels technological way, if our Melrose does go away, they're still gonna have police there, right?
As far as the general provision?
Yeah.
Yes, they will share it with the rest of Beat fourteen, the other neighborhoods that have police service. And it was one officer in the beat per shift, is that correct, chief?
Yes, there's generally free shifts per day that are funded by the general fund, and there's a beat car for each of those. So like council member said, is Beat fourteen is River Park plus five neighborhoods plus two shopping centers. So they're split out with the enhanced services. Those two cars or the other, the beat cars are back and forth, but the overtime cars intended to remain in CFD five.
All right, so we'll go to folks who haven't asked questions yet. So we'll go to the gentleman in the back in the black shirt, and then I'm, and then the other gentleman, and then we'll come to this section, all right? And I want to be mindful, I hope to do ninety minutes. Folks, if you want to say for additional questions, I invite you to do so, but we will have a hard stop at eight o'clock because of the gym availability for us. So, okay, gentleman in the back.
So how are, how are parks any different than the other parks in the city? Or are they getting better than the other parks?
Okay, so the question is, how are the River Park parks any better or what are they getting addition compared to the other parks in the city? Correct, sir?
Well, I'll start by saying that River Park has seven parks.
Yes.
Seven parks. There's no other neighborhoods in the city of Oxnard that have seven parks. Closest would be Seabridge, they have three. And then when you get into the general fund parks, there's a couple neighborhoods that have two. So when it comes to the, again, the level of service, kind of like the discussion I had with the playgrounds, you as a neighborhood can determine what level of service that you want. Seabridge neighborhood, they determine what level of service they want. They want landscapers there five days a week. That's what they get. You as a neighborhood, you can say that, you can say, we want, as a group, speaking through your neighborhood council, you can say, we want it once a week, we want it twice a week, whatever level of service, that's what we're here for. And then it goes into things like your, the replacement of your playgrounds. When do you want to do that? It's going to hit, when your playgrounds hit twelve to fifteen years and we feel that it's time to replace them, we'll say, hey, are you ready to replace them? And oh, by the way, you can pick your playgrounds. You can pick how much money you want to spend on those playgrounds. Do you want to spend three hundred thousand dollars on those playgrounds? Or do you want to spend six hundred thousand dollars on those playgrounds? For the general fund playgrounds, for the neighborhoods, I have to be fair to all those neighborhoods. I can't put a six hundred thousand dollar playground in one neighborhood that is paid through the general fund, and then in the neighborhood next to it, only give them a three hundred thousand dollar playground. I've got to be fair. Whereas as a community facilities district, you have that option to determine what you want to do as a neighborhood. And a lot of it is, what is the price gonna be? So when it comes to the price, it's not like you're gonna have to pay for it in one year. Like Anthony said, if you have a large capital project, they can start putting money into savings over the course of three years. So instead of paying three hundred thousand... instead of paying three hundred thousand dollars all in one year, the assessment district pays one hundred thousand dollars for three years, and then you pay for the playground. That is the flexibility you have as a community facilities district that you do not have for the general fund.
So, you're saying you have unlimited funds?
Well, there's that line, the max assessment, as Anthony showed you. There's what you are assessed and what's the maximum allowable. That's the window that you can go into. You can't go over the max, but depending on what the neighborhood wants to do, you can determine it. Seabridge determines theirs, Westport determines theirs, so does River Park.
Would the Dog Park be an example of that too, Mr. Hallett? Uh, the establishment of the Dog Park at Woodrow Park, which wasn't originally there, but I believe residents requested and advocated and became, um, the decision that, uh, was made to install the Dog Park?
That is correct. So, with the, if, if that's something that the residents wanted, the Dog Park was installed. Going to the general fund parks, now we run into the same problem. It sets precedence. We have a general fund park that says, hey, we want to put in a Dog Park. And the city council says, okay, go ahead and put the Dog Park in there. And then, we get all the parks down in South Oxnard going, hey, how come the North Park got a Dog Park and we didn't? Or even if it went into the park next door to them, hey, how come that neighborhood got a Dog Park and we didn't? But as a CFD, again, you have more of that flexibility.
Can you, okay, can you expand on, now, I'm not in favor of having the neighborhood council kind of facilitate those, um, questions and things basically burn back to you. Is there another process in place to get in contact with residents? Because many people are left out if they can't attend a neighborhood council meeting to weigh in. And I think there should be something else in place, like a survey, working with you directly, special districts, because many times, people can't attend these meetings to weigh in. And I disliked that, you know, even when I was the chair, the best I could come up with was conducting a poll and a Facebook group, but still, I can't reach every bit.
So, the question is, for those of you who couldn't hear it, the question was, is, is there a way we can get this input without using the neighborhood council? Because a lot of people work, they're not able to attend the neighborhood council meetings. My response to that is then, what's the purpose of the neighborhood council? Not only special districts have a neighborhood council, all of our general fund neighborhoods, well, most of our general fund, uh, neighborhoods have inactive neighborhood council. If they're not available in the hours that's convenient to the majority of the community, then that's something that the community needs to have a discussion with the neighborhood council.
I don't think so.
And say, let's have it on a Saturday at the park. Let's, whenever was the best time. That, that's a discussion with them. It's, it's not practical for us to, we, we can host, we can host meetings.
Because that's what we pay administrative fees for, to, you know, for special districts, for the CFD. So, why are you relying on unpaid volunteers who don't have the bandwidth, the financial means to support that? Why? I mean, that's what, that's administrative fees.
I would respond to that saying, I am also a former neighborhood council chair who volunteered my time to do it, was elected to three terms to do it. And also, because, um, I came into that role because my former chair had the neighborhood council go vacant for a number of years. And people wanted to do stuff, but they didn't have the bandwidth or didn't know how to get it started, and I stepped up and did it. But even through that volunteerism, I had a great executive board. We all worked great, collaborating together. I am very proud of the work we did as a neighborhood. I'm in a general fund neighborhood. We have no park. Uh, we, um, are a neighborhood that was built just after World War II. But all the challenges that we had in our neighborhood, we were able to address through that process. We regularly would get twenty to thirty people who would come. During COVID, we still got twenty or thirty people even on Zoom, and that goes to the experience those residents have. If they feel their time was well spent, they went, worked on meaningful projects. I feel like for River Park, I can't speak for the residents or the executive board, but if that's something that they feel is inaccessible, I think they've already built in, it's not just one budget meeting, it's a series of meetings that people can join throughout that process. They can look at the minutes or connect with the chair any time to get updates. But I, I would love, I go to the neighborhood council meetings for all of the district two neighborhoods. I would love the, the number of people in here. It'd be great if they were at all those budget meetings as well. Though, what I can say is that, as, from my observation as a neighborhood council chair and now as a city council member, is that when people are upset or something's going on, they will show up. When things are, seem like they're going well, they probably put the, the trust in the neighborhood council, like, all right, y'all, y'all got this. If I don't think you do, I will show up and I will let you know. And so, that goes to the, um, the structure of that. And as Mr. Hallett said to close this, if Wednesday nights at six PM don't work, people are welcome to take a vote and like, hey, this isn't working. Would we like to meet on a different day, different time, different location? That's the magic of that system.
What was the size of your neighborhood? Because River Park is one of the largest.
You're absolutely right.
If not, so you're comparing, you know, the avail- availability to the neighborhood council we were on, to say that the one that we currently, hey, currently have can accommodate a much bigger neighborhood. I don't think they can.
Well, we'll see how many choose to show up from that. So, um, again, Mr. Miller is here, and so...
How big was Fremont?
Do you have another question?
I just asked, how big was, I'm sorry, Fremont South?
Yes.
How big is it?
Fremont South is a little, between five hundred and six hundred homes.
Okay, so that's roughly enough.
All right, so we have other questions.
Can I move on with another question?
We are going to move on. There, I promised the gentleman in the back that he could vote, yes? You had a, can, can you wait till we get through, and then we'll come back to folks who've already asked questions, sir?
It's kind of the same question as on the park. Why are we supposed to pay extra when we have been dragged with people that use these parks, come from the outside? Why are we covering the cost of maintenance of these parks extra when you have, they're open to the public, so anybody can come and use them, such practices or you name it. And as far as twelve, twenty years, these playgrounds have been here over fifty years, and they have nothing replaced. And they're the most basic playground, like, anywhere in the city. They're nothing special. There's nothing special about these parks. As you guys keep saying that we are so blessed to have them, they're no different than any other park. They're open to the public, and anybody can come and use them. And I thought that, when you're not in charge, we have a perfect park at that park, and you guys do.
So, I will, um, let Mr. Hallett or Mr. Miller speak to your first part of your question about the general use of the parks by the general public. But, um, I invite you, you, I'll leave my contact information. We can do a tour of other parks throughout District Two. Um, there are some that have, uh, not had slides for a number of years and have plywood blocking them because either those parts are no longer available, or we just cannot yet, yet to that on the CIP list. But...
Who's holding that? Can't borrow the money to take care of your people and provide playgrounds for them? Who's holding that? Why, why are you blaming us for it?
I don't think anyone's going to be able to, but I'll try and answer your questions if you'd like.
So, we'll, we'll go ahead and answer the, the first part of your question. Go ahead.
Okay, so, to the first part of the question, what makes River Park parks different? Really? And, and really, River Park parks differences are really in the standard of maintenance here. Uh, we have the ability to keep up with the maintenance much better than we are able to in the rest of, in the rest of the city. Um, the, River Park is a specific planned community, meaning that when the development was put together, it was put together as a whole. Individual parks within the community were meant to serve specific areas most closely. So, essentially, I'm going to use Crescent Park as an example. Crescent Park is, is a neighborhood park. Crescent Park is, provides its primary, primary benefit to those individuals who live directly across the street from that park, it's a nice place to live because a park is physically there. That park was put there because it was a part of the specific plan for this community. River Park as a whole would not exist if that plan was not put in place. That plan would not have been able to been executed if a funding mechanism was not put in place to actually fund those improvements. If River Park were to have been built without a CFD or without a specific plan, it likely would have been built like any other park or any other, any other neighborhood in the city. And that is to say that there wouldn't be seven parks available to this particular area. You would see less of them. It wouldn't be as densely green as it is. So, just to say that River Park isn't any more special than, than other neighborhoods in the city, it's, it's by design that there are more facilities available to the residents who live here because of that plan. And that plan wouldn't have been able to be, to, to continue without a funding, funding mechanism in place to actually maintain it as such. Now, you're correct. It has been twelve years since some of the parks in River Park have been, have been built. Uh, there are parks, playgrounds in the CIP slated for replacement over the course of the next few years. That is something that the special districts team has the privilege to do in River Park because we don't have to get in line with the rest of the CIP, basically across the city, because these parks are exclusively funded by these communities. Uh, that's, and that, again, speaks to the reason why everyone comes here, because they are nicer places to be than in other places in the community. Uh, now, specifically about having a birthday party in, in River Park, I'm going to go back about twelve years. Uh, there was a push to actually regulate the amount of, uh, usage that the pavilion spaces were getting used at, and so, a park permitting system was put in place. That is, uh, something that was asked for by the community. Now, if you don't want to pay for that space, you don't have to. You could set up and have a birthday party. There's nothing stopping you from doing that. If you want to reserve it exclusively for your own purposes and get a permit, you're more than welcome to do that too. So, River Park park reservations stay in River Park. The funding for those that stays in River Park. So, if you reserve a park space here in River Park, that goes into the CFD's funds.
Please remember to raise your hand for questions. All right, the gentleman's been waiting patiently. Excuse me, excuse me. I appreciate that you...
If you only use the facility, it's as you require to reserve.
These parks are public spaces. You are more than welcome to go to that park pavilion and set up. You cannot kick somebody out, and that's essentially what that is, what is, what is telling you. And you have no right to kick somebody out, and unless somebody has the permit to use that space exclusively, you cannot remove someone to hold your event there. And I guess to finalize that, if nobody has that space reserved, it is open first come first, sir. If you would like it guaranteed, you can reserve it. And that's not the, these are not the only parks. We have other parks that have a reservation system throughout the city. Okay, go ahead, sir.
No, excuse me. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. We'll, we'll come back, all right? I mean, well, in the time we have, if we can come back. If not, we will be here after if you'd like to ask a question directly. Okay, the gentleman in the back.
Gabe, I have a question for you specifically, if I could, please. The council just approved a ten percent increase for Alex in his role. Now, most of the hardworking people here would love a ten percent raise. Can you give us four or five key examples of how Alex has exceeded his performance so that he got a raise that was well in excess of the cost of living increase?
I'll give you one big one. Before I came under the council, in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, um, he was hired in two thousand eighteen. The following fiscal year, it was revealed that this city, uh, was in a nine point two million dollar deficit, and a structural deficit. And they had to make the difficult decision to cut programs, to, uh, cut services, and to eliminate some positions. And that was a very little point. The subsequent few years that happened after that, outside of the CFD and outside of other special districts that had funding mechanisms for landscaping, you may have seen all of the parks and all of the medians go to essentially dust and dead plants. And that was because we were rightsizing the amount of revenue that the city was bringing in with the amount of services we could put out to match that revenue. Then, the, under the, uh, administration of this particular city manager, measure he was floated, and the voters decisively approved it, and that's why we have a nine point two five percent sales tax rate, as was mentioned. Now, outside of this, you can see the difference in landscaping from then until now. But I want to point out, parallel to that time, your neighborhood, River Park, beautifully maintained itself because it had its own funding mechanism outside of the general fund. And so, those are, um, some parallel things there. That's one. The next is that, uh, when Mr. Nguyen came on board, uh, again, before my time, but he took out of his contract automatic pay raises. He took out a number of perks, things that typically would go to a city manager, especially one of a city this size with a number of challenges cities like, or this city has. And after four years, he received his first pay increase, then didn't get one the following year and got one this year. I will say, I have worked jobs where, um, absolutely, I've done great work, and I got a pat on the back and an attaboy. Um, I am a firm believer, as one of his seven bosses, if you do good quality work, you deserve to be compensated, or you deserve to ha- have that, um, recognized. Now, those are some of the, the, the major things. We can talk later about some of the merits, but... Yes, one more. Go ahead.
Ten percent this year, seven percent the year before, five percent the year before that. And I agree, he did take a cut during the COVID year. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I forgot that. Twenty-five thousand dollars, my apologies.
Took a cut during the COVID year, which is a big, big deal. But, five percent the following year, seven percent the next year, now ten percent the year after that. So, I acknowledge what you said he's done, and the cats did a good job. I was specifically asking, between last fiscal year and this fiscal year, what were some of the top performance measures that he exceeded to warrant that ten percent, in addition to the seven percent and the five percent the year before that?
Without going into personnel issues, I will say, if you receive a positive evaluation, that you should be, uh, recognized for that, no matter what that looks like. Now, with, um, with what happened between last year and this year, well, we had a thirty-five million dollar surplus when just six years ago, we had a nine point two million dollar deficit. And so, we can look at all of the different merits. Um, when the city manager does a good job, like any of us here, I think anybody should be recognized for that. So, thank you. All right, so Mr. Partello, and then, in the time we have, I think we only have time for a few more questions. So, um, any, any questions, sir?
Yes, yeah, it's a question. Uh, Gabe...
Excuse me, Mr. Stare.
The ordinance that was passed that said if the CFD is eliminated, that nothing in the current CFD is providing for, uh, services would be paid out of the general fund. So, that's the language that's written. But currently, the CFD number five is paying for the basic level and the enhanced level. So, the CFD as it is now and has been, this community started in two thousand and five. So, almost twenty years, nineteen years, the residents have been paying for both the basic level and the enhanced level. So, if you could please just clarify with that ordinance, if the CFD goes away, would the city of Oxnard continue the basic level of all services, like maintaining the parks, the parkways, the road, safety service, and those things, you know, at that similar basic level then? Because the language is written that everything that the CFD is paying for, and if it's eliminated, it would go away. The city would not pay for those things. So, if you could clarify that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, with the ordinance, thirty forty-seven, these are the things that, excuse me, I'm sorry. Mr. Partello asked, uh, with the ordinance that was passed that says that the general fund will not subsidize any eliminated or reduced special districts taxes, um, what will be affected or what will be covered? This lays out, this lays out what your CFD currently pays for. If you eliminate everything, this is what you'll get rid of. If K passes, there's probably some nuances to it. If L passes because of the ordinance, essentially, I would venture to say it gets pretty close to J, where many of these services won't be provided. You'll get the basics. You will get what everyone else gets, like, uh, response from police when you call nine-one-one. If you call for a package theft and there is a higher priority call, you will have to wait for that response. Um, when we look at landscaping, I used the example last time of, we are on a five-year grid pruning cycle for all of the general fund trees that are owned by the city. Mr. Miller stated that your trees are trimmed annually. For the most part, you will now do every five years instead of annually. Um, there are all those nuances we can look at, but the point of this is that this ordinance was passed not to punish River Park, but to establish that if there are other neighborhoods or this neighborhood that have a special tax that they pay into, if, as is their right, they choose to eliminate or reduce that tax, they can do so. But the other neighborhoods are not going to subsidize services that are eliminated by those choices. Now, the same thing that, um, Alex had said earlier, if the street goes both ways. If another neighborhood, or another CFD, or another special district eliminated their taxes, nor would you all, River Park would not be expected, nor will you pay to subsidize what they eliminate. It goes both ways on that. And again, someone had asked me, well, why, um, you know, what were your, you didn't think about, like, uh, River Park, um, residents in that, and that this is targeting them? I beg to differ, because this is, as I mentioned, this protects you all as well as some other CFD does this in the future. But on the flip side, I was elected to serve over thirty thousand residents in District Two, and I absolutely am proud to serve all of you. And I absolutely am proud to serve all of you. But there are two-thirds of the rest of the district and the rest of the city who are affected if a, if a special district eliminates their special tax. And so that's the justification or the thoughts behind that ordinance. Now, last time, um, it was mentioned that, uh, at the River Park neighborhood council meeting, Mr. Starr had stated that, um, I've tried, excuse me for not putting exactly, but I'll get as close as I can. When this ordinance is brought up, he stated, um, we are challenging that in court right now. Um, when I looked at the, um, court documents and we got the update on that, I didn't see that actually in there. It was about the order of the ballot measures, it was about the title and language, excuse me.
Wrong boss.
Excuse me. So, um, if that is in court now, I haven't seen that, but, um, we can look at the court website. I encourage all of you to look at the spirit court to see if that's there. He stated to all of you he was doing it, but, um, if that was mistaken, that doesn't mean he can't do it, but he stated it was and I would just confuse it, it didn't happen.
Gabe, just a real quick follow-up then.
One follow-up, Mr. Partello.
Okay, thank you. Um, so they would be getting the basic level of service then, right? Because the language in the ordinance said everything that they're paying for, which does include basic services. So, you know, the language says something different than them receiving basic service like everybody else, right? And just as a follow-up, the whole time, from two thousand and five, these residents have been paying for both the basic level and the enhanced level. Why have they been paying for the basic?
Okay, so you're asking if they're being double taxed, is that what you're asking?
Why are they paying for the basic level?
Are they being double taxed, is that what you're asking?
Well, why are they paying for the basic level when everybody else is paying through that, the general fund? They've been paying a special tax for their basic level service and their enhanced.
Okay, Anthony's going to take that.
So I'll, I'll bring this back to more about the language of the ordinance and that it, it's not explicitly talking about base versus like extra or anything like that. It, it actually limits things to funding for items that would be considered health hazard or safety issues. So if maintenance in this district is guaranteed by these, the special tax, there is no basic level of maintenance that the general fund provides in this area for those specific items. The general fund provides services to this neighborhood as it stands and, and another number of different items. So for example, streets, uh, sidewalk repairs, things along those lines. The CFD doesn't cover those items.
It covers them in other neighborhoods with the general fund. It covers those things that these folks have been paying for.
That's not, that's not what I said. The CFD does...
I know it's not what you said, but that's the fact.
Well, excuse me, let me answer the question then. The CFD does not cover those items because the general fund does in this neighborhood. Now, because the general fund does not pay for special, or special...
The general fund pays zero.
That is not true.
That is true.
If the, if the general fund does not, does not pay for, say, for example, park maintenance in this area because these parks would not exist without the special tax or this district, that is the reason why there is no...
It's the maintenance of those parks.
Can you complete his response, Mr. Partello? I, I'm not, I'm not going to argue this point. I'm just going to say why... Excuse me. I'm, I'm going to say essentially that these parks would not exist without this district paying for them.
That's irrelevant to my point. Any questions?
Thank you. I think we have time for two more questions, both of this, uh, gentleman right here and then Ms. Purcell in the back.
Hi, so you mentioned that we pay both to the general fund and the mellow root for CFD five. And the general fund covers tree trimming once every five years if there was no CFD. Where CFD covers tree trimming once, uh, once a year. Does that mean that the general fund is kicking in for tree trimming once every five years? Or are we covering it all with CFD five every single year? No matter if it's, would be normally entitled to those without?
Do you want to take that one, Anthony?
So currently, the CFD pays for one hundred percent of the tree trimming cycle in River Park.
So it's double taxation?
No, it's not double taxation because again, these trees are essentially in the neighborhood as planned. It would not have existed without the CFD being formed.
That's what the gentleman before him exactly pointed out. Exactly. Now, we're not getting the general fund.
Excuse me, sir, excuse me. Ms. Purcell has her hand up. All right, go ahead.
So given Mr. Howlett's dedication to tree trimming is fairly, if parks in the rest of the city cannot even get general fund for basic level maintenance, why is it fair to River Park if they don't get even the basic level maintenance through the general fund and they have to pay for that? That's a double taxation, so please explain how that is fair?
Again, like, and there is, did everybody hear the question?
No.
Okay. So the question is, if we, it's, it's kind of the same question that's been going. If we are paying a general tax that the rest of the city pays for and there's a general level of service, how come we are not getting that? It's because this is a mellow roots. This was formed with seven parks, trees, landscapes. If this neighborhood would not exist without the mellow roots. So the question being, you gotta, it, it goes back to what the city manager was saying earlier about the neighborhoods in South Oxnard. All things being equal, if, if this CFD says, "No, we're not going to pay anymore, we're all going general fund." Now, the council has to make a decision. How do they answer all the neighborhoods in South Oxnard that only have one park? Many of them don't have any parks? And say, "Why is our general fund paying for seven parks in River Park? Why does River Park get seven parks, but we get one?" That's going to be a question that the city council is going to have to answer, so...
It's using these parks here, not just River Park. Why is that fair? Is the question, why is it fair that River Park doesn't get any credit because the general fund is paying? Why is that not working?
There should be an offset.
So these are, these are public parks. They are open to the public, just as, just as anyone from River Park can go to the other parks, can travel on the roads, can walk on the sidewalks. You also benefit from the general fund and the, and the Measure E tax by doing those things. Um, was there anything addition to that that you maybe wanted to add?
How about a matter of...
Excuse me. Is your hand up, Mr. Starr? You can...
Alicia's hand was up, she asked, "Why is it fair..."
And I'm asking, do you have a follow-up?
So it's not follow-up. It's, it's your question was, "Why is it fair?" And there is no answer yet to that. Because it's not fair.
They're, they're public parks, again, as was mentioned numerous times. They were, they were built because of the mellow roots, because of the CFD. If, if two thousand and five, city of Oxnard had said, "Hey, do you want seven parks?" I don't think they could have done it without that mechanism. Now, here we are in two thousand and twenty-four, they're established, they're developed, they are open to the public. If, if you, from East Village, if you feel that, um, River Park should be closing off their parks to others, I mean, that's a, that's an interesting conversation to have about public land.
And what you're saying, public, public park, the city has...
All right, all right, shh, all right. Excuse me, excuse me. We've been respectful through this, we've been respectful to this point. Mr. Herrera? All right. We're done, we're going to wrap it up then. We will be here, if you'd like to come ask questions. Mr. Starr, if you'd like to speak to him as well.
And then you have full information. Good, I didn't have time. But, look, I'm going to say something.